It's 7:01. I'm going to call to order the city council meeting for the City of Lake Elmo here on March 18th. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item B on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I, is there anything that anybody wants to get changed? Was there something we needed to pull from the consent agenda? Which item was that?
Staff would like to pull number seven.
Number seven. Staff would like to pull number seven from the consent agenda. Anything else? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended with number seven moving into the regular agenda.
Move to approve agenda as amended?
Sir, second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. I'll call the question. All those in favor of approval of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Agenda is hereby approved. In our packets, we were given the March 4th special and regular meeting minutes. Unless there's any changes to that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of the March 4th 2025 special and regular meetings?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of approving March 4th 2025 special and regular meeting minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak on public comments, inquiries, Julie? No? Okay. We have a presentation, the Lake Elmo J.C.'s.
We would like to present to you, the City of Lake Elmo, a $12,000 check donation to, from our charitable gambling fund.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your support.
And do I understand that the J.C.'s is kind of moving away, unfortunately?
Yeah, we're, we are, we are withering in numbers and therefore we will probably be folding by mid-year.
Okay. Well, let's get a picture with that wonderful big chair.
And thank you for your continued support over the years. We greatly, greatly appreciate it.
We really appreciate you guys. There's people under 40 that can be part of the J.C.'s, right? Hi, Callan. How are you? All right, Callan. All right. For the consent agenda this evening, we have number two, approved payments and dispersments. Number three, approved lease for farmland in David C. Farms. Number four, approved T-Mobile Temp Tower 3303 Langley. I think that's a lease there. Number five is approved pay request, number one for well number two PFOS water treatment. Number six is approved security release for Easton Village Fourth Edition. Number eight, accept donation from Lake Elmo J.C.'s Resolution 2025-028. Number nine, approve Washington County Tree Stewards Program. Number 10, approve Lake Elmo Elementary Development Agreement, Resolutions 2025-031. Number 11, authorize Administrative Services Coordinator job posting. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
We have a motion except and a second to approve the consent agenda as stated. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, consent agenda is hereby approved. And then first on the regular agenda is accept feasibility report and call for improvement hearing, approve plans and specifications and order advertisement for bids for the 2025 street and utility improvements, Resolution 2025-030. I do understand that there might be some people that came to speak on this this evening, so if you plan on doing so or wish to, you need to fill out a sheet in the back and give that to the clerk, at which time we'll listen to people from the audience.
Okay, how do I get, where do I, I'm sorry. Mr. Mayor and Council, I have a present, thank you, a presentation. You've seen a lot of this information before, but just want to step through things one more time. This is the next step in a 429 process. So, before I use an item, as the mayor just stated, to approve, to accept the feasibility report and authorize, approve the feasibility, accept feasibility report, accept plans. Actually, this is the wrong presentation. This is, this is, this is last.
We need the March 18th one.
We need the March 18th one. That one was the February presentation. I can, I can, I can probably use this, just to close it though, but can you send this back, Julie? Or did I totally screw this up? Apologies.
It don't happen. Technology is great when it works. I don't think that's, yeah, I don't think that's the right one.
What I can do is use this and just pretend that this red box is around March 18th. Right now, it's largely the same information. But we've, you know, at the last meeting, we were looking for council feedback whether to extend water service in certain neighborhoods. We took that information, we went back, we ended up not extending water service, and that's what final plans were developed on. So, tonight, we are, apologies again, we're before the council to accept the feasibility report, call for the improvement hearing to be held on May 6th, and accept, or approve final plans, specifications, and authorize staff to go to bids. So, I'm going to kind of scroll through some of this, this being the old presentation. Apologies again. So, the input that we got from council, because it was so, so expensive for not just the city, but residents to extend the public water lines in to those neighborhoods, that we ended up not pursuing that. We also didn't have any strong resident desire to have that public water extended. Folks have, several folks have heavily invested in their own water treatment systems and are happy to continue with that. So, getting to 55th Street, the cost, the street cost didn't change based on the actions taken last meeting. So, we do have the same assessment rates, 22, 300, and one at 1150 with partial access. Stepping through again, apologies for this slide. The 59th Court neighborhood, those assessments are proposed at 77, 500 for the reclamation improvements, installation of concrete curb and gutter. Irish Court, just to refresh, those assessments, that rate stayed constant as well at 10,700. And so, with the 55th Street North, 57th Street North, and Julep Way neighborhood, those assessments, the costs of the projects up there, there was never, pardon me, there was never the ability to extend public water down those streets. So, the cost was, you know, determined to be $757,000 for that work. The portion to be assessed translates to an assessment per benefited household of $14,200, and there are 16 properties. At Teal Pass, those, that assessment is projected to be, I believe it's 17,000, based on the cost of $759,000. I apologize again for kind of using this old presentation. I don't know what happened here, but there are parking restrictions planned. It's all within the feasibility studies, which are on file. Generally, the, I believe it's the south side of the road has the restriction and anywhere around a cul-de-sac, in situations where the streets are less than 26 feet and wet face-to-face. Here we are. So, again, just to reiterate, yep, around cul-de-sacs and that, kind of that southern side of the road. So, what I'll say is, in the absence of some additional maps, which I had in the other presentation, the improvements are, you know, uniformly for the five neighborhoods are a reclamation of the existing asphalt surface, an installation of curb and gutter, concrete curb and gutter on the edge of a B418 section. So, that's a four-inch-high gutter section. This is, this best, kind of matches in with grades of driveways. These neighborhoods all had old bituminous road edging, and, you know, that varied kind of between three and four inches high. And then we are matching geometrically and, and from a profile standpoint, these, the roadways. So, I apologize again for not having a better graphic. So, the action before us tonight again is to accept the feasibility study, order a public improvement hearing, which would be May 6th, that would be advertised in the Stillwater Gazette, and those affected would be directly bailed to. Approve the final plans, and, again, a copy of which is on file here at City Hall, and to authorize staff to advance to advertise for bids. And that's what I got.
Okay.
I'm simply right, I'm kind of looking for a map here. I know that, so here's, this will work for everybody. So, I have, you know, disseminated, you know, to get to the issue of the 57th Street, you know, I guess the debate on including that in the improvements, I, I'll just add that my, my position hasn't changed. My recommendation to include 57th Street as part of the improved, or part of the improvements for the 2025 street project stands. And I could offer more information by way of that, but I think I'll let, if council wants to hear some of the folks who live out there talk, I'm happy to step aside.
All right, sure. When I call your name, you can come up to the podium, you'll have six minutes to speak. There's no back and forth with the council. If there are questions of staff, we'll, you know, address them as such, or we can discuss it amongst council during, after the motion phase. So, when you come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please, and I'll call up John Bourbon.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is John Bourbon, and I reside at 9612 57th Street North in Rolling Hills Development. You've already received three mails from the five residents in this community that are quote benefiting from this road improvement on 57th Street. Eric Yost, this is here in support. He's not going to speak, but he's asking me to represent him. Brad, Mark, Brad Burgi's going to speak. And then Len Durand's here. He's our neighbor, but he's not involved. He's down the street. This doesn't financially impact him, but he's here to show his support of our opinion. So, you know, we've sent those emails. Hopefully, you've had a chance to read them, digest. You know, they're a lot lengthy, more than what could be said in six minutes. So, what I'd like to do is just highlight our unanimous opposition to the plan to have 57th Street replaced as part of this overall project. This opposition is based on merit and fact. The road in question was already replaced in 2011 at an age of about 18 years. At the time of replacement, there was additional subsurface drainage installed, because that was causing the road to fail. Water would seep up through cracks in the road. There is a big grade difference in the neighborhood. That system mitigated the failure mode and remains working today. It worked. Engineers did their job. The road's fine. Now, the road is being slated to be replaced at only 14 years of age, and it has not reached the end of its useful life. Roads should last more than 20 years in this sort of residential setting. It's cars, pickups, not heavy trucks. The remainder of 57th Street was replaced in 2016, 17. At that time, it was 23 to 24 years of age. So, the original road was fine, except for the water issue in our section of the road. So, in talking to city engineers, Mr. Stanley told me that the road was evaluated in 2021, graded as average. But in that conversation, he admitted that the road looks better than average right now. It had been maintained. It got a seal coat. There aren't major cracks. There's some potholes, like every road, but they've been patched. It's in good shape, and that's a testament to the maintenance that's been done. So, there is no reason, based on its condition, to be replaced. The proposed sewer also is unnecessary. I know he's told me that that's not a driving factor in the project, but to add to that, I live at the lowest point on the road. Storm sewer is just to the left of my driveway. We have had one instance of water across the road in the wintertime when the storm sewer froze. So, no matter what's put in, that would have happened regardless. It was an awful winter. City came out, thawed it, and everything was fine. Heavy rains, there's a little bit of water in the road, but it's not an issue. Sewer does not need to be upgraded on the, on the road, and that should not drive the project either. So, as the map shows here, there's two cul-de-sacs. You see the yellow? Those are the ends of the cul-de-sacs, and then the straight section is then connected with 57th Street. So, that's the extent of the project in our neighborhood. The cul-de-sacs, to the best of my knowledge, have not been replaced. The one in Judy Mary Manor was put in, I think somewhere around 97, and for Lake Elmo Vista about 2001. So, they're 24 to 28 years old. They've got their, the people have got their investment out of those roads, and they're in bad shape. They're much worse than 57th Street. So, why is 57th Street included in this plan? There's nothing wrong with it. It's got a lot of useful life left. So, you know, just trying to understand the process and talking to Mr. Stanley, said there's economies of scale in road construction projects. Yeah, for sure, there could be. And that replacing 57th Street now may be less expensive than maybe doing it sometime in the future. He said, you know, in the process of repairing the road, there may be damage to the road by the construction vehicles. You know what? I communicated that to all the neighbors. You saw the email in full transparency. I provided that email to you guys, but we're not convinced by this speculation. Tying in a 14-year-old road in good condition to 24-year-old roads that are in need of repair makes no sense. There is no evidence that the future cost per unit will be greater. And if you look at the project, you know, if you just think about the cost of doing something, 57th Street is a constant width 28 feet. The cul-de-sacs have a constant width until you get to the ends, where they bulb out. One of them has a center hole. So, you know, the work to do that, to me, is a lot more than just pouring and repairing a constant width road. So, and then, you know, if you want to speculate, what if the rest of 57th Street needs to be replaced, and that is done along with ours? It'll be cheaper, too. So, regarding costs, the numbers just don't add up. In 2011, when our road was replaced, the assessment was 4,900. In 2016, per Len, he calls it at being 6,500. Now, eight years later, it's 15 grand? It just doesn't make sense. It seems excessive. And, you know, if it's accurate, that's even more reason to leave it alone and get our full useful life out of that road. It, it doesn't make sense to replace an asset that has useful life with the attempt to minimize the overall cost of maintaining that asset. So, the investment of our dollars and the city dollars make no sense. This is not an investment worth doing, and we ask that you strike this portion of the road from the project and let us get the full useful life of the road and our original investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Brad Burgi.
Good evening to you all. My name is Brad Burgi. I live at 9481 57th Street North, which is also part of the Rolling Hills section. I only have one comment and question I want to direct to you, and I support totally what John just previously presented to you. In the staff report presented to the council on September 17th, 2024, quote, "The city maintains a 10-year revolving street capital improvement program to maintain, develop, or replace street network to acceptable level of service and address pavements exceeding their useful service life and no longer can be maintained." So, my main question tonight is, can the city continue to claim that the Rolling Hills section of 57th Street North has exceeded its service life and no longer can be maintained? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have questions for the city engineer on this. You have questions for the city engineer on this?
I do, I do have a question here and I guess maybe a little bit for the applicants. If you could just repeat, you said at the beginning of your comment, the, the residents that were in favor of this. I, I know we got the email from you, from Eric. I think you mentioned in the email, John, no, sorry, Brad.
So there's five residents and all five of us in Rolling Hills?
Yep.
So it's Greg Kenfield and his wife Sasha, who was, they were, they sent me an email in support after I sent it out to them. Brad Burgie, Eric Yostis and myself, my wife John. So we're the five residents in Rolling Hills Estates on 57th Street.
Okay, thank you. So, and then my question for the, for the city engineer is then, have you, have you heard from the Kenfields? Or the, the Muas at all about this project? Again, obviously, you know, we have three that we have, you know, that I've seen emails from and, and heard from. Have we heard from the others?
Mayor and Councilman Hearn, I have not heard from anybody else. I've, I've spoken with Mr. Bourbon and I've seen some other email correspondence that was sent through council, but I haven't heard from anybody else.
If you look at the emails, I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, but my emails include those families. And if you want me to forward additional emails, they say they're in support of the opposition, I'll gladly do it. Just to make sure there's no question that two of the residents want the road. I hate to say trust me, but I will only say that because I know positively they're in opposition. And I think Brad, you saw the email from the Muas, Greg sent me a text, so.
Yeah, sorry, another question here for the city engineer. I know we kind of chatted about this a little bit too, but maybe just to, to talk about here as well. So if these, if these five units were not included, we didn't go forward with that 57th Street, how would that impact the assessments for the rest of the properties?
So now we're talking about the properties on the cul-de-sacs like 55th Street North and Julep Way. So I was able to break out the cost kind of per-street section. And those assessments for those folks would actually slightly go down. They would go down to somewhere, it'd probably be in the neighborhood of $10,000 to $11,000 per property based on, you know, the current estimates, you know. The factor being, you know, if you look at, you know, 57th Street, you can kind of see it just right on the drawing. If you combine the lengths of these two cul-de-sacs, that length, that stretch of 57th Street is almost twice as long as those lengths of those two cul-de-sacs. And then the fact that there is this large, that these, these are large lots with significant frontage on 57th Street. You know, so it really, you know, when you pull those lots out and that, those costs out, you know, 55th and, and Julep Way, those, those assessments do go down. If 50, if 57th was to be done as a standalone.
Like in the fut, like in the future?
Yeah, based on today's cost, the assessments would be proposed at over $21,000. So in the future, I anticipate that number would be higher, so.
I should have asked you this earlier on the phone today. Was that communicated with the residents as well? That kind of like what that price would jump up to and any feedback that you received from them on that as well?
No, at the time, when I spoke with Mr. Bourbon, you know, we, you know, it was just kind of a, a, you know, spur of the moment phone call and I didn't have all that information at hand at the time. So in the days since, we've had some, some more time to think about it and do a little more analysis.
Okay.
Would you like my opinion?
No, not right now. Thank you. So you had, you have any questions?
He took my last question, so I'm good to go. Thank you.
Good.
I'm good.
Okay. Given that, I'll entertain a motion on the topic. The motion is on page. Three of the.
Motion to approve resolution number 2025-030, receiving the feasibility report, calling hearing on improvement, approving the plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2025 street and utility improvements.
Does it second?
All support.
All right, discussion.
Now, just to confirm, is this motion to keep 57th Street a part of this project?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm going to give my two cents on this. There was a lot, lot said and a lot covered. I've driven this stretch of roadway and I'm just going to let you know, you're probably not going to like what I have to say, but given my 30-plus years in the civil engineering experience and my experience in building roadways in construction and working for a geotechnical company, not the one that did the geotech for this particular project and reviewing the geotech report, a few things to say. In the geotech report, there were two borings done in that section between Julep Way and 55th Street North. When we look at the corrings of that pavement, it's obvious that the sections were thin in such that a typical standard residential roadway, you don't want any less than four inches of bituminous. I think the average, if I look at my geotech report that I, that I reviewed, shows, it was done with ground penetrating radar, which can go a couple of feet down into the pavement when driven. Bear with me on this section, but I think on that 57th Street section. We're looking at. Where is it? Okay. It's FWD. We don't need FWD. UPR thickness for 57th shows an average thickness of only 3.4 inches with a 15th percentile and 2.9 inches and the minimum being 2.3 inches of structure. The base in and of itself identified in the corrings is dirty, silties with some aggregate, which is not a, a base that you want for the condition of your roadway. And I'll say from experience, things can look to be in good shape on the surface and serviceable, but really it's like the, the backbone of something. If the subgrade and the underground structure is not in place, that road is doomed for failure sooner than later. In addition, this section of roadway has bituminous curb and gutter, which may have served a purpose in the past, but it was at the developer's benefit to put in curb and gutter because it absolutely lends no structural attributes to the roadway itself. In other words, I refer to it as the crust on the bread, keeping all the dough in the middle. The curb and gutter helps the structure of the roadway. Regular vehicular traffic on a standard roadway that's four inches thick and is constructed properly with proper maintenance should last easily 20 years and, and even more. This roadway obviously was not constructed to that thickness. I think the road cores at RH1 and RH2 in the report show thickness. It does show the chip seal, which is great at sealing up small cracks and keeping water from infiltrating the base, which would increase the deterioration due to the freeze thaw cycle that we, we get here in Minnesota. And it accelerates that deterioration fairly quickly. RH1, let me get to the coring pictures here. RH1 has a thickness of 3.7 inches where the actual, the chip seal kind of comes off the top, but at two inches, we're going to, we're going to see some delamination in the asphalt, which over the long term, isn't going to be good. And I think the boring shows alluvial sands mixed with some aggregate and silt, which is, you would never spec into a base for roadway. It's basically like the developer came in, no aggregates were brought in, scraped the top and paved the top. And that's probably why something was done in 2011. I don't have the answer for that. I wasn't in this position at that time. Sir, there's no time for you to talk right now.
The city managed the replacement in 2011. It wasn't the original developer.
The other one, RH2, shows a thickness of 2.3 inches. The lower portion, chip seal was present at the top. So with all that being said, in my 30-plus years of experience, this roadway, I've driven it a couple of times. It looks okay. It's not great, but it's going to deteriorate very quickly. So my position, I would be irresponsible in my professional opinion if I said, just leave it. The city has a considerable investment in its infrastructure. I know that there is a cost to the residents. The basic beat-up of these streets is unregulated sanitation trucks that don't have weight limits on it. Other than that, that's what's going to beat up the roadway. Given the proper subgrade base, along with the proper structure on top, road's going to be good for, I would say, 30 years easy. So with that, that's, that's why I'm going to support this motion.
I'd like to weigh in on this. So I took a ride up there today and, and looked at the street like the mayor. I have a few more years' experience as a civil engineer, having served as city engineer and director of all the infrastructure in a major city on the West Coast. I'm licensed in two states as an engineer. I took a look. The seal coat, I think, covers up a lot of the scars on that road. As I looked at sections, it was badly cracked. The seal coating tends to kind of hide that a little bit, but it was badly cracked. The bituminous curb and gutter pretty much non-existent in some areas. I did not look at the soils report as, as the mayor has, but in my view, that section would benefit from a replacement. And after listening to the report on the soils and the boring, it clearly would be a benefit. But just looking at it and from my experience of walking down that street, that street is not in, is not as good shape as you think it does. The seal coating hides a lot of the scars. I'll also point out that I have been involved in the construction end of roads, curb and gutter, concrete streets, bituminous, and the construction side of my engineering profession. And so I think I have a little bit of knowledge about that and I spent a good deal of time out there today looking at the street. After receiving your emails and trying to consider from your perspective, I understand that the assessments can be, can be painful. There's no doubt about that. The city as a whole are picking up a large share of the road, but you do have that pain of the assessment. And I hope our policy will make that a little bit easier for you to manage. But I think you'd be well-served by having that street replaced. If you don't do so now, four or five years from now, the cost of doing it, because it's going to require a complete reconstruction, tearing everything up, installing a proper base and building it basically from the subbase up, which is going to be three or four times as expensive. I know you don't want to hear that, but I'm giving it to you as, again, as a professional opinion, as a licensed engineer in this state and someone who's done a lot of this work, both designing them and building them.
I will say that when we're comparing costs, you brought up costs from 2011. In the construction industry, when we had COVID, we saw steel prices, cement prices go up astronomically during COVID. So they do generally go up a tick each year. But with that, labor, steel, cement, all went up at like, like steel went up 80%. Cement went up 60%. So at least in the transportation industry that we, that we saw.
I would defer to Councilman Dragicic and the mayor about their expertise here, so I would, I would support the motion as well.
Sure. Go for it.
I wish I could add to the, the years of engineering experience here. I've, I've zero years of, of engineering experience. I guess the, the thing that I'm battling a little bit here is I cannot argue with the engineering at all. Seen the boring reports. I mean, that completely makes sense from the engineering standpoint. The, the reasoning behind making these repairs right now, I guess the, the, the part that I'm struggling with a little bit is if we have all of the residents saying that, you know, from my understanding, that they're okay with knowing that this price is going to go up significantly if this was assessed to just these five properties, three, four years down the road. If, if that's something that they're okay with, you know, unless I'm missing something here and, and that's going to drastically affect the houses around it for what, from 25 years down the road, when these streets that are being repaired currently have to be redone again. If that's going to impact significantly those, I guess that's, again, I'm just trying to kind of battle between those a little bit. So my understanding is that the five residents that are being impacted by this are aware of what the price increase would be. And if that's what they're, and it's going to, the other thing I did want to make sure was, and this was the question with, well, how is it going to impact? If these five are not part of this, how is this going to impact the other residents around them? It does bring the price down for them. If it would have went the other way, I would have, I, there's, I would not even have thought twice about this. Because of that, I, I'm probably going to vote differently than the rest of the council.
Here's the argument I'll give you on that. 70% of this cost is city cost. 30% is resident cost. So if we wait five years and have to do full reconstruction costs, then the city's cost is going up exorbitantly as well. It's not just, not just the residents' costs. As far as I'm concerned, I'm here to represent the whole city. And so that I would want to ensure that the city's cost does not go up. Now, if the five residents wanted to sign an agreement that if and when that road deteriorates, they take on 100% of the cost, I'd listen to that. But as far as the city paying, I don't want the city to come back in five to 10 years and pay that much more.
Pay the appreciate, the, the inflation.
Increase cost and the increased construction value.
It's not just inflation. It's going to require a complete reconstruct at that point.
Sure, okay.
So.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We don't, we don't burden, I mean, just like they redid the roads in my neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, paid my portion, city paid their portion. It is what it is.
Yeah, that, in, again, based off of the boring numbers that you're seeing there, it looks like within the next three to five years, if nothing's done, that's a rec, it's a total reconstruction versus a reclamation.
You'll get at least five years out of that, right? But beyond that, it's going to be, depending on the weather, the spring, freeze thaw, those cracks open up, you get water introduced, it gets into the alluvial soils in the bottom. Without that aggregate, that's going to properly drain. It's, it's, it's really kind of a swag.
Yeah, that's a good point. I, I was not thinking about from that standpoint. Because, and that was kind of to my comment, well, how does it impact the residents around it? I'm not thinking about, well, yeah, the city's covering the 70%. So that's a good point.
I think the other thing is we're not ordering the improvement this evening. We're calling for the plans and specs and calling for the public hearing. So the motion before us tonight is not to order the improvement to be done, but to get the plans and specifications and a call for the public hearing on all of these projects. So there's still time to reconsider and perhaps we, you know, we can read the soils reports ourselves that the mayor is able to obtain and get a better understanding of it. If you haven't driven up there, take a look. I would encourage you to do that because there's nothing, you know, better than looking at it yourself.
But it sounds like in this situation, it's, it's more about. But it sounds like in this situation, it's, it's more about what's underneath.
It is, but you can see some of the scars on top and that, you know, obviously chip seals are a good maintenance program for, for roadway to help seal up some of the smaller cracks to, to, to keep the, Professor Gene Skok said the, the worst three things for pavement are water, water, and water. So anytime you have cracks in your pavement and you're introducing water into a subsurface that's not well-drained, such as what lies underneath this roadway, you're going to incur more problems quicker.
Okay.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion approved Resolution 2025-030, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Item number 13 is letter of intent for 3M Priority 2 funding trail project.
So as you may know, we requested a letter of intent. And the day after it was released, the ball, for the ball fields, they were deemed ineligible through priority two. So we were asked to see if there are any trails that we could apply for. And we looked at the trail network, and most of the trails that we have in the plan required right-of-way acquisitions, so it was going to take a while. This is one of the trails that you'll see is the Central Greenway Corridor coming out of the park and then going east to, down Stillwater towards the village. There's also, you know, Sunfish Lake Park. So we considered potentially you could run a, basically a half-mile multi-use tumulus trail from Stillwater to Sunfish Lake Park. So if this is something you'd want to support, this was really the only trail that we could find that was kind of an easy trail that would be ready to go. But it would be a nice connection in nature from a major project that's going to happen in the future.
Question on the trail. Thank you. In the letter, is there any indication on the cost of the trail?
No.
Being a normal eight-foot width, I'm assuming the tumulus trail.
That's correct.
Okay, so we haven't done a, like a?
We're going to work with engineering. The submittal is on the fourth, so we're gonna.
Fourth of April?
Fourth of April. It's a pretty quick submittal. But they don't want to see projects really over a half a million. We don't think it's going to meet that. I think I did a quick estimate of about 200,000.
Okay.
So it seems to fit the range. But we'll get a better number from engineering.
Okay. Any other questions for Director Stoppa?
It's 100% grant-funded, though.
Right, right, right. Okay. We do have somebody who'd like to speak on this from the public. You know the routine, Tony, so give your name and your rank, serial code, all that.
I'm Tony Manzera. I live at 5050 Kirkwood Avenue in North San Lake Elmo. And I wanted to say that I like, I like this idea, but I see this as an opportunity to take the six minutes or five to talk about another one that we just found out recently that the, the program under which we've been doing a restoration of Sunfish Lake Park is called Conservation Partners Legacy Program. And those programs apparently won't spend more than a million dollars on a, on a specific project. And so we've been working now since the, the spring of 2018 on the park. And if you look, it's going very, very well. So far, we've gotten 661,000 from the DNR CPL project. And we'd like to be able to finish this job. There's, there's another RFP coming up on that program in August where we were going to apply for more money to try to finish it. But they're, those are only good for three years, and we need a longer period of time to establish the, the controlled burn and forestry, to go back in there and get rid of buckthorn as it comes back. And so the, there's an opportunity to get money from the 3M fund to continue this work. The, the timeframe of the, of the projects that you can apply for, for funding is five years. And so if we go in in August and get the rest of what we need to take out the rest of the woody debris and do the rest of the forestry mulching, then we're left with the question, where do we get the money for the next few years to essentially extend the project? And so I sent, I wrote up another letter of intent under the, the name of the Friends of Lake Elmo Sunfish Lake Park, sent a copy to Administrator Miller and to Public Works Director Powers and to Deputy Public Works Director Swain, Swainopol. And with the suggestion that I, I just go ahead and send this in and see what happens. Basically, what it would be is we'd be asking for permission to send in a proposal that would ask for $1.8 million over to the five-year period, starting in 2027, which is when the money would be available, to continue on with this project and make sure the buckthorn doesn't come back. So the reason I came here is I wanted to make sure that nobody would object to me sending in a letter. And you don't have to answer, but again, as, as Community Development Director Stoppa said, it's the fourth of April. I didn't, on the, on the other three, I went through the process of getting it onto the agenda and everything. I don't think there's time to do that before the, before it would have to be sent in. So I would like to just make sure that nobody would object if I sent in a letter asking for permission to put this proposal in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manzera. Any more questions related to the trail for Mr. Stoppa?
Motion to support a letter of intent submission by staff for the 3M Priority 2 grant funds for a multi-use path connecting the future Central Greenway Regional Trail to Sunfish Lake Park.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion here?
I would just say, I mean, this, it seems like from our discussion last time when we were looking for the grant, it fits that, the criteria of what they're looking for to create opportunities, since we're not able to use the water as much for recreation. So it seems like this fits, and it's worth, worth a shot. Because this would, this would be a great connection, especially with the future development, with the athletic fields there, too, and then the Greenway Trail coming through there. I mean, what a great addition that would be. And, and even if, even if only one or two, one or the other of the, the ball fields or the Greenway happens, it still would be a great option to have.
Okay. I, I just want to say thanks for bringing this forward. Looking for opportunities to, to make Lake Elmo better. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
With that, I'll call the question. All those in favor of a motion to support a letter of intent submission by staff for the 3M Priority 2 grant funds for a multi-use path connecting the future Central Greenway Regional Trail to Sunfish Lake Park? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number 14, you get to stay up there. Approve old fire station and public works building RFP.
All right, this is what everybody's been talking about. Call in the office. Yep. Everybody's ready. Okay. So fire station RFP has been at the EDA for a couple of meetings, and this is what they've recommended for approval to be sent to the council. So just to be clear, there's seven parcels. It's about 1.2 acres, but only 8.8 is buildable. We would require that a right-of-way dedication would be made, you know, during this process. Because as you can see, some of the lots are in the street. I ran a quick, just, the assessment on this is about a million dollars, just enough sites, but there's seven buildings. So we'd want to reestablish the alley in terms of a dedication, so that access through the alley could also be used. So the background of this is during the village study, we asked residents what they wanted to see at the location. Basically said eating, drinking establishments, family-friendly spaces, maybe some housing if it was mixed-use, a community center, green spaces, recreational spaces, and retail. One of the quotes, I guess one of the sayings that came up was that the survey results indicated that residents wanted to preserve the charm and character of the old village as it currently exists, and that they wanted to limit big-box development. So with the criteria, criteria evaluation, you'll see in a second, we worked that in. Just something to talk about really quick, though, is it's currently in a Phase 1 environmental assessment. That hopefully will wrap up in April. We spoke to an appraiser. It was difficult to get a speculative appraisal because there could be two different sites, depending on how it's awarded. So we'll do the appraisal after the selection. The EDA recommended a minimum purchase price of the property for 100,000. If it were to appraise for more, that difference would be considered the subsidy to the developer. We initially had post-closing performance measures written in the RFP, but something that we'll negotiate with legal and with purchaser, through the purchase agreement. And that's something that the council will also see. While the purchase price is not the primary factor in the decision, the city may consider the offer amount when selecting a proposal. So that's come up a lot, like, how important is the price? It's not a price competition. It's the best product that we could get for the city and for residents. So the committee currently would be 10 representatives, all EDA members, or they could designate someone, one planning commissioner and then city staff. They would score the proposals and pick the three highest. The finalists could come to an open meeting and present to the committee. And then the committee would send their recommendations to the city council. Would basically send the three, recommend one, and then the council would then approve what they would like to approve. And then the staff will work on the purchase agreement. This is our timeline right now. This is the best-case scenario. So the way the RFP is written, it's written to have some flexibility on the timeline. But essentially, what we wanted to show you was that April 17, best-case scenario, we could release the RFP. We are having an official building open house where people can walk through the, the fire station. We'll have a pre-application conference, which is basically just a presentation about the RFP, so people understand how to fill it out. And if they have any questions, we need those questions in usually a week later, but we're going to answer them and post those answers on the website. So sometimes the answers modify the RFP, so we want to make sure everybody has those answers. And the proposals will be due. So after that, we'll give people about a month to submit. And then you see, to be determined timeline is just the review process. So the evaluation criteria is what we talked about earlier. It's 65 points for community benefits. So the main thing that we wanted to stress was land use, and that would be 30 points. So examples would be, would be positive, would be retail restaurants, bakeries, taprooms, brew pubs, markets. We also said if there is a mixed-use development, the dwelling should be outside of the fire station footprint and should not exceed two stories to keep the charm of the old village. Preservation and design, so this is encouraging the adaptive reuse of the fire station and not a demolition of the fire station. So they would receive points for that. If someone wanted to demolish the Parks Building, they would not lose points for that. Also, the site is in a design district, so they should look at how to promote preservation and traditional building design. So that will all be considered in terms of what, what their approach would be. Public space and streetscape improvements, it's 10 points. Basically, a lot of concrete on the site, so we want to see how they're going to add landscaping to the site. On parking, parking's interesting because we want to see them get creative with their parking plan. We've heard from some people that they want to retain public parking and have people be able to use the parking lot. So we just want to see what that looks like. They could earn more points if they have a creative plan. And then economic impact, we've heard that people would like to see more small businesses, so that would receive five points. And then that the type of development should attract residents from Lake Elmo and surrounding areas to the old village. We think that this is really important, that this development could anchor and bring more people to the village. Developer qualifications, 25 points is always important, 10 points for experience and previous projects. We want to see their approach and timeline with outline costs. This is pretty important, too, just to know the scope of the project and what's feasible. And then proof of funds, this is just a basic, you know, showing that they have the proof of funds or a letter from the bank, or just how they plan on funding it, too. We want to, we want to understand what that looks like. And then with the post-closing performance measures, I talked about that. There were a couple of ways and methods that we discussed at the EDA, but this RFP doesn't go into the details because it just basically says that there will be compliance requirements, and then not meeting them could result in the property being returned to the city, and that more details will be worked out during the purchase agreement. And like I said, that would be reviewed by the city council. So they'll understand exactly what those measure, performance measures will be at the time of the purchase agreement. And I just have the recommendation. So if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for Director Stoppa? Councilmember Hearn?
Could you just talk through a little bit with the, the subsidy again for the difference between the appraisal and the purchase price? Walk me through that one a little bit.
So this one's pretty tricky because we're only allowed to give a business subsidy of up to $150,000. So depending on where the appraisal comes in, it may actually push the purchase price up, depending on what the developer wants to do. There's certain ways that you can receive that credit through environmental cleanup and I believe historic rehabilitation costs. That's something that we'll have to work with our, with legal and who's going to review it, the applications. But if someone, for example, has a project that really doesn't create jobs, and there's no reason to receive anything but the $150,000 business subsidy, then they would have to, you know, basically increase their purchase price if it's below that.
Okay.
Yes.
Where does the $150,000 limit come from?
It's a state statute.
Oh, hmm. I forgot that one.
But you can provide subsidy, but it's not considered a business subsidy if certain criteria are met. So we need to work with them when we're selecting and kind of talk through that and understand.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you also have to have a public hearing on the subsidy and also have a business subsidy policy. Those are two things we would also have to implement if we're going to give some type of business subsidy here.
Okay. Is that something we can cross that bridge when we get to it?
Yep.
Okay. Councilmember Dragicich?
How's the subsidy determined? Is it strictly the value, praise value versus the purchase price? Or is there, is it that issue stone or? I mean, we have praise value, but, you know, that may not be the actual value someone's willing to pay for it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm just looking at the statute. Business subsidy is a state or local government agency contribution of real property. So that would be basically what we have here. It doesn't really go into defining how you determine that, that amount.
But I believe we discussed, Sarah and I have discussed that there's an economic development specialist at Kennedy and Graven that we are going to be working with on this process. I would add that, too.
I seem to recall council, maybe three years ago, approved a TIF for redevelopment properties. Has that been factored into this at all?
That could be factored in on, on the site.
Okay.
So if a developer comes in and wants to do a TIF, that's something we could consider.
We could consider. Yeah, okay.
This, I think this question, I don't want this to turn into discussion, but with you being on the EDA, too, so maybe if you have some insight on this, but you probably answered as well. So when that $100,000 price tag was set, assuming that the value of the land is a million dollars, is the goal that we're, we're hoping that the business is going to be able to get this subsidy to help encourage them to develop? If you could kind of walk me through that process with where that $100,000 minimum was determined, I guess? If we know that the value is a million dollars?
I don't know if we know the value. It's assessed at a million, but I wouldn't be that confident saying that it's anywhere near a million dollars. I think the 100,000 just came from conversations with EDA that there's an absolute minimum, basically like a, a reserve at an auction.
Kind of a show of interest, right? If you're, if you're really interested in it, then you got to, I mean, it's kind of like that, one of the, one of the things to get points was to be able to show that you're financially viable to do that, right? I mean, Charles Cadenhead could walk in and give you an outstanding proposal, but I don't have a penny to back my name to do it. So why would giving me the, the opportunity be a good idea, right?
And, and it is where, I mean, we don't have to accept any of that kind of. And it is where, I mean, we don't have to accept any that kind of, so if we have 10 proposals all for $100,000, and we're like, well, you know, this is it.
Well, if they don't provide any points, then...
And they don't provide points and value, we don't have to approve any of them.
True.
Okay.
Yeah, that's stated in the, in the RFP. And how is this committee being selected, again?
So the EDA members and then one planning commissioner that we're going to ask for the, and then just staff. So if someone in the EDA doesn't want to be on the committee, they can assign someone.
Okay.
Councilmember Jagosic?
One last question, and I don't want to beat this up, but the difference in value and the purchase price. So if we put this up for an RFP and we get four or five, you know, proposals, and the highest one is 600,000, isn't that really what the value of the property is, regardless of, you know, I mean, the value is what's a willing buyer is willing to pay a willing seller?
Sure. I mean, I've dealt with this in the past where you put development requirements on it, so sometimes it's difficult to really say if that's the true value. But I agree with that sentiment. I mean, I think what we'll see, too, is you may see people offering a higher price point for something that is not encouraged in the RFP, and then something would require a lot more work, you know, and then it would bring that value down. So you're getting a better outcome, but financially viable, it would have to like, it would have to drag the purchase price down. So you're going to see that, too, probably occur. Thank you.
Makes sense. If there are any more questions for Director Stoppa, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve their request for a proposal for disposition of the former fire station in Parks Building.
Support.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Councilmember Jagosic?
I just wanted to thank Jason for his work on this. I think I read through the RFP, it's very good. Appreciate the effort you and your staff put into that, and I'm looking forward to what our proposals might look like.
Thank you.
I concur.
Yeah, I love the criteria. I think it's really well-laid out, and will make it very objective and help, help me a lot when we're looking at the different options.
Yeah, I really like all the things that you guys have done. This is going to be right in my backyard, so look, really looking forward to it.
Thank you. I just want to state, too, that we have an email list, so anybody who wants to be on the email list can email the office, call the office. Right now, we're over 10 people, so we're going to have the official open house, but if other people that are on the list want to see the building, we will be moving forward with opportunities to actually go into the building.
Great.
All right. I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve the request for proposals for disposition of the former fire station in Parks Building, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is approved. Then we have item number 15, approve utility rates and fee changes for 2025, ordinance 2025-09, resolution 2025-029.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm just going to do a really quick recap of our presentation from last week. We did a full discussion at the workshop with the council, so I would definitely encourage people to watch that video if it's available online, and review that packet for more information on this. So the majority of this item addresses the utility fees. I'm going to insert just a little bit at the end about some other fees. So in short, our goals for the utility study are to just make sure that our utility funds are sustainable. We need to make sure that we're charging enough to sustain these funds, which are the utility funds, just to clarify, water, sewer, and stormwater. So we look at revenue sufficiency, we look at cash balances over time, we now are looking to decrease our debt over time, and then as well, expense recovery, and we are currently looking at including our depreciation expense within that expense recovery. There was some discussion at the workshop about how this model this year has changed since we did it with Northland Financial Services in 2023, and so we had talked with Tammy Umdall today and had a bit of a discussion, and she kind of reviewed some of the changes and the viewpoints that Nina and I have been implementing versus what her team and former city administrator Hunt had, had recommended. The main points are, and I might be doing this at the wrong time, but there are four main points I'll touch on. One is that we adjusted and corrected some revenue projections. We are moving towards that true profitability, so making sure that we're covering that depreciation expense. We're decreasing debt, and this comes back to the sort of ongoing discussion that council and staff have been having over the last year of trying to decrease our very high debt load at the city right now. And then four is the addition of the water treatment plants. So we have $50 million in new capital assets coming on board, which will both increase our depreciation as well as increase our operation, our actual out-of-pocket, out-of, operational expenses. So those are the four main items for the water fund. Sewer fund is mainly the depreciation expense and then some increased net council expenses. So financial forecasting is just that. We are modeling based on assumptions and predictions, things that we can control, things that we can't, and we're just going to recognize that this is not perfect and change is inevitable. So this slide kind of goes over some of that, those financial forecasting. So we are projecting existing operations out at an inflationary increase of 3%. We project out our CIP projects, which, again, have changed a little bit since the last model, so we revisit these annually, they're projected on a 10-year term. We took out MPCA funding for extensions, and again, we're moving away from issuing debt as much as we can, adding the water treatment plants, again, adding that depreciation as well as the operations. So with, without the increase that's recommended, we would have maybe normally done a 3% inflationary increase. Using the current revenue and expense assumptions, this is what our cash would look like over the next 10-year period, so crashing, essentially. So our suggested rate change at the moment is 20% every year for five years and then a 3% inflationary increase. We do adopt these typically year by year, so what we're looking at is just the 20% for this year. For sewer, it would be 20% every year for four years, then a 10% in year five and inflationary after that. These increases make us slightly less dependent on development. We are strongly subsidized by development at the moment because of our WAC, sorry, availability charges, connection charges and such. With this model, the funds should be profitable after a year five, and then, of course, we can reassess and adjust the plan in future years as development occurs or doesn't.
When you say profitable, is that an indication of the ability to then pay for the depreciated value when replacement's needed?
Correct.
Because I understand it's not supposed to be a profitable endeavor, correct? It's to maintain and replace future needs.
Maintain, and it's like, correct, and you, so, I guess it's a little weird with utility funds because it's full accrual accounting, and so you're, you're, it's not like cash accounting where, where it's really straightforward. With our full accrual, we're looking at, we have to recognize revenues as, like, special assessments when they're assessed, not when we actually receive them. We have to recognize, you know, all of these grants. We have to recognize capital contributions.
I'm just concerned that some people might say, see the word profitable and misinterpret that as that the city is making money on this deal, so...
No, the city's only making enough money in order to rebuild the things that we need to rebuild for the water fund specifically, or the sewer fund specifically, or the stormwater fund specifically. We're not sending the money around to other places.
Optics matter.
Correct.
Yeah.
I think what we're talking about here is that operating revenues will exceed operating expenses.
Correct.
And so we don't, you know, we talked last, we look back, we're the last seven years, we've had operating losses, and so this plan puts us on track to get there over the five-year period, which is a reasonable period of time, given where we are positioned at currently in those funds.
Correct. So with the model, this is what our cash looks like over time. It feels like it's a lot of cash, but when we look at how much it's going to cost to replace our infrastructure in the next 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, we've got a long ways to go. So we want to make sure that we start now so that in 20 years or 30 years, the residents are not facing astronomical increases. This is what our debt would look like over the next 10 years. We would hope to be debt-free by 2045, so again, that's still 20 years out before we're This is what our revenues and expenses look like. We see a spike in '25 and '26 because of the grants from MPCA for the water treatment facilities, and you can see after 2020, sorry, 2030, we do have revenues outpacing expenses. This is the sewer revenue versus expenses. Again, we are seeing 2029 revenues outpacing expenses. So our quarterly bill examples are shown for low volume, that's a 6,000 gallons build, we would see a quarterly bill increase of $18.35, roughly $6 per month. For a medium-volume property, 20 gallons build, we'd see a $35 increase or $11.70 per mil. Relative to other cities, we are, we would be roughly, and this is kind of a comparison, these are 2024 numbers for other cities and then our 2025 number, so we would be sixth for low volume and fifth for medium volume. And then finally, just because we are adapting or revising the fee schedule, I had asked staff if they had any other changes, and we received a submission from the building department to revise the solar building permits to just resolve some, some complaint and question issues and be in more in line with the time and inspections involved for those.
So, yeah, seeing that, are you able to show what the previous fees were?
These are new, the solar fees are new.
They would be new?
New.
Okay.
There was...
So currently, we don't charge anything for those.
Sorry, Jason, do you happen to know what the solar...
Not off the top of my head, no.
...fees were? I believe they're all the commercial, so the commercial is fee based on valuation plus a review fee. I think maybe that was the original, and then we added the flat fees.
So when we do fee based on valuation, isn't that a, is that typically a percentage of the cost of the valuation? Or, I mean, that seems a little...
Yes.
Yeah.
And is that percentage stated somewhere else in the fee schedule?
Yes, I believe it is in the building permit section.
All right, thank you.
So that's the abbreviated presentation. I'm happy to address any questions.
I kind of asked questions as we went. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I do not.
Do the gentlemen have any questions?
No questions here.
All right, well, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve ordinance 2025-09, revising the 2025 fee schedule for the city of Lake Elmo and revising City Code 5.16 regarding surface water fees.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion needed. I know we discussed a lot during the workshop. Hopefully, we've kind of vetted all that out. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor of the motion to approve ordinance 2025-019, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to adopt resolution 2025-029, authorizing publication of ordinance 2025-09 by title and summary.
Support.
I'll call the question, since this is for publication. All those in favor of resolution 2025-029, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Now, we can go to the number seven item from the consent agenda was pulled. I believe there was a date changed in that that necessitated it coming into the general regular agenda. Accept improvements and approve security reduction for East Village 5, fifth edition.
Yeah, so Eastern Village, fifth edition, the request here is to retroactively begin the warranty period June 30th, 2024. The work was completed in advance of June 30th, 2024, and due to paperwork hang up, we've been working with the developer. We have done a walkthrough, punch list is settled, everything's acceptable, so this, this warranty period would end June 30th, 2025.
So this June?
For fifth, yep, just for the fifth edition.
Okay.
So...
So it's an administrative change?
More, yeah, clean up some paperwork, yep.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Questions? No?
No. I think just because it was, uh, needed to bring this into general, the general agenda because it was changed after the packet had been sent out, and the information couldn't be, be made public in time, so maintain that transparency, pull that into the regular agenda, and explain why that change was made. So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to accept the improvements and approve the security reduction as detailed in the worksheet, plus the, the changes from the meeting tonight for Eastern Village, fifth edition, contingent on the developer being current with all payments and obligations in accordance with the developer agreement.
Second.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions as to the change that was made and why? No? All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion as previously stated, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you very much. Council reports. Councilmember Jagosic?
Nothing tonight.
I have nothing for council reports today.
No report.
No report.
Okay. Staff reports, anything? Ms. Miller?
I would like to thank our Public Works crews. They were able to take down our abandoned Brookfield sign that's on the corner of the Vernon 14 for us, so that is gone.
Great. Ms. Johnson?
No, thank you, no report.
I actually have a report. The state legislature is once again introducing zoning preemption, and we have been tracking that, and it's made it out of its initial committees. The LMC is also tracking it in opposition, and they're asking for cities to send letters of opposition to their representatives. I just wanted to go through them really quick and just see if you're okay with us drafting a letter and sending it. The LMC also has a draft letter. We can send that to you after the meeting. But just real quick, there's the Minnesota Starter Home Act. It would require cities to permit at least two units on any single-family zone lot. It limits lot sizes, and it prohibits minimum parking, so you can't require parking. More Homes Right Places Act, for us, that means that we would have to upzone 50% of residential areas to allow townhouses, duplexes, and triplexes by right. It would prohibit certain construction materials, eliminate parking. It would limit the use of planning developments. So what you'll see with some of these bills is they'll put them together because they're altering certain sections. And then there's Transforming Main Street Act. It basically requires that the cities permit multifamily mixed-use in commercial districts, except for heavy industrial zones. It would also allow multifamily buildings up to 75 feet tall in commercial districts, eliminate parking again, and then award density bonuses for affordable housing. There's another one that's a preemption of municipal design standards that would not allow any type of design standards for any units under four, from one to four. This would have an effect on our Lake Elmo design guidelines. And then also, there's just an outright other act that's a prohibition of minimum parking requirements for development, and this states it would prohibit all cities from requiring minimum parking spaces for any new development, including commercial, industrial, and residential. So that would eliminate all parking, and it would just be chosen by the developer. So that's, that's what we're working on, so...
From my viewpoint, I think some of that is absolutely ridiculous. And just another issue where larger governments trying to dictate what smaller units of government should be doing within their own boundaries, and, uh, absolutely, I, I, I can't speak for the other council members, but I'm on board.
I'm okay with the big no, thank you.
Me too.
Okay.
Me as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was just gonna mention, um, that staff is already working on, um, some, uh, news article, a little flashy things for the, the fresh and such, um, regarding the rate increase. So certainly, if you guys are getting questions or concerns, feel free to send them my way. Send them Nino's way. She wrote the, the study.
Have gotten a couple of comments, uh, you know, uh, essentially from some of our residents that do have fixed incomes.
Yeah, it's, we recognize it's hard.
It's understandable.
Yeah, absolutely. So, thank you.
Okay. Nina?
No report.
Understandable?
No report.
Ms. Insala?
No report.
All right, with that, uh, well, we, future agenda items. Just in case people are curious what's coming up, um, in the first of April, and it's, it's dangerous to have a council meeting on April Fool's Day, especially if, uh, if I'm gonna be here, so. There's some, uh, plans and specs for ISDA thirty-four utility improvements. The hearing twenty twenty, I thought that was April, uh, sixth.
That is, that is correct. That's out, that's an outdated line item. The hearing is May sixth.
May sixth, right, okay. So, um, looks like we're looking at accepting bids and award for contract at the Village Parkway. Is that still on?
That is still on. We, um, we, we did, we're, we're able to negotiate the easements.
All right, perfect. So those are a couple of items we got coming up, uh, and then, uh, consent agenda, and we'll have our typical Arbor Day thing that we present out at the Public Works facility. I'm assuming that that's gonna be the same, so. Appreciate everybody's time. Thanks for all your hard work. I wonder, we'll adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight twenty-seven.